Thank you for coming today. I apologize for the name. I'm taking the traits of my dad, who used to call me by my brother's name and used to call my brother by my name. So, it's just one of those. It's one of those things that happens, I do feel. But thank you for coming today and leading us into the place of Dennis. Thank you. All right, we do have any comments, members of the board? Let me get my screen up here. Supervisor Stone.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the supervisor, everybody, and welcome back. I appreciate that you had a great trip and safe return. I look forward to hearing about some of the details of your trip. You know, there are many car manufacturers now that are embarking on electric vehicles, and one of those companies is a company called Kodak. It is a car that is assembled in Los Angeles. It has the second largest range of any electric car, and it's getting down into the affordable range with federal rebates that are associated with it. And I've spoken with representatives of Kodak, and they're going to be working with Mr. Howdy Show and our fleets management and purchasing, and they've offered to allow us to utilize one of these electric cars to see how it can meld, if you will, into our fleet of cars where it could be used. It gets, the new model is coming out, and I think it's a model they're going to share with us. It gets about 150 miles to the charge, and with the supercharger that they now have, 220 volt, it can recharge in about three hours. So, this is going to be the beginning, I think, as I've mentioned in previous board meetings, that electric cars are going to be coming to prominence in the next five years. People are going to be able to plug their cars in their garage and be able to get 200 or 300 miles probably within the next couple of years. And I just want to again make sure that our planning department is working with our transportation department and making sure that as we have new commercial shopping centers that come to fruition, we need to ensure that we have charging stations that will be available to people as this technology is advancing fast, and we need to make sure that we are an electric car friendly county, being that we are a very large county, and we want to make sure that people have the confidence that they can drive their electric cars from one side of the county to another. So, I'll be working with our transportation and planning departments, making sure that we have all of our policies in place, all of our public facilities will hopefully have charging stations that will be able to accommodate this new technology, not the old technology that takes eight, 12 hours to charge these vehicles. So, when we get this Kodak car, again, it's going to be a demonstration project. We're going to invite the public to take a look at this car. I've also heard from Nissan that they'd like to also share with us their leaf car, and I know that they are working on more advanced battery technology as well to increase the range, which is the challenge with not only the leaf, but many other electors that are available on the market in the United States today. So, I look forward to sharing that with the board. Mr. Chair, thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Stone. No further comments, at least that I can see by request. So, we do have our executive office, officer? Nothing? Okay. I'll give a very short, from what I at least I have been able to ascertain in terms of talking with CSAC with regard to the state budget. The budget was signed last week. The state is still in tremendous need of revenue, falling behind in revenue. They have made cuts to programs, but have not made cuts to, what appears, they have not made any cuts to levels of state government, where it seems that they could get some savings there. They're approaching some pension reform, supposedly. At least that's the plan. They're going to start going for some pension reform. We'll see how that shakes out. One issue that is, came about last week in the redevelopment area, is that the auditors, and I'm sure we won't have this problem here in Riverside County, but the auditors must have all their numbers into the state and funding into the state, I think by June, July, end of July, or there will be a $10,000 a day fine. And that is the result of the state is short of cash and not doing the things necessary to rein in the spending. HUDA, which is the housing, what's the acronym stand for? Highway User Tax? Tax Assessment? Okay. HUDA. You'll get to know it by the name of HUDA, like Huda and a blowfish. Thank you. HUDA is the housing, or the Highway User Tax Assessment, and basically that is money that we get for the local streets and roads, our shop projects, our STIP and our local, as I said, local streets and roads. They are taking that away again, and it looks like it may be a permanent take. Do you have anything to add to that, George, anything else?
The state has decided to take a portion of the HUDA that we thought was going to be protected. It will translate to about one and a half to $2 million a year to impact to our transportation department. The state has been as creative as they normally are with their accounting practices and trying to scrape as much money as they can into the state general fund.
There's no, thank you, George. That is something that we need more and more. When you drive our roads, you see that the roads are deteriorating, and people are spending less on gas because it's so expensive, plus they're becoming more efficient. So, we're finding less revenue coming in for gas, excuse me, for roads, local roads. Also, they are taking, what I've understood, although I haven't received clarification of this, our OHV tax dollars. OHV tax dollars are the tax dollars that are spent by off-road vehicle users, and are supposed to come back to the local counties to build off-road parks. They're going to rob that money again as well. So, they continue to take local money to balance the state's budget, and that's unfortunate, but that's a sign of more to come, I'm sure, in the future. With that, that concludes any update on the state budget. I'm sure more will follow in the weeks ahead when two are, any additions, corrections, or changes to the judge and clerk.
Good morning. Additions are items 3.48, 3.49, and a closed session. Deletions, item 2.8, 2.9, and 2.11. Corrections, continue item 3.22 to July 17, 2012. Continue item 3.45 to July 17, 2012. Continue item 3.46 to July 31, 2012. And continue item 16.1 to July 31, 2012.
Okay, thank you, Keesha. I haven't seen one this morning. We're going to go ahead and call for a motion on the Admin Action Calendar and Consent Calendar.
So moved.
Okay, I'm going to pull item 2.21 from that motion, and I'll second your motion. A bit of a presentation by our assessor. Motion carries for zero. Supervisor Ashley is not with us today. He had some issues, family issues to deal with today. And I'm going to call on our assessor, Larry Ward, who has an update for us on property values.
Chairman Tavallini, Honorable Board Members Larry Ward, Assessor, County Court Recorder. I'm here this morning to provide you with an information update on our close of the assessment roll for 2012, 2013. While unfortunately I have to report that for an unprecedented fourth consecutive year, the assessment roll is a negative number, it is substantially less than our earlier projection of a negative 2% to 2.5%. The overall assessment roll will decrease about $300 million for this year, but percentage-wise, it's less than 2/10 of 1%. Hopefully, this year's basically flat assessment roll is an indication that we bought it now from the worst real estate crash since the Great Depression, and will begin the long, slow process of recovery. A recent comment on Dataquick indicated that the market is being slowly nursed back to health by low interest rates, modestly improved economy, and we suspect a widening sense that the housing market is at or nearby. As an example, for Riverside, the May-over-May sales volume in Riverside County was up 9%. The median sales price for a home, single-family residence, was 205,000. It increased from 197,000 in May of 2011. Clearly, any recovery in the real estate market at this time is fragile. It's tied to the economy, employment, foreclosures, and based on comments from my colleague, Don Kent, things that happen in places like Europe and China. We'll say that for the last, or that some of our earlier projections were based on incomplete data, and sales over the last few months are showing increases which were reflected in our current numbers. Thanks to the board and the executive office, we were able to hire some additional appraisal staff this past year, and we think that this had a positive effect in that it allowed us to more thoroughly review our automated Prop 8 residential program, along with putting some additional, more experienced resources on defending and commercial appeals. The CPI for Prop 13, the inflation factor was at the maximum 2% for the first time since 2009. This 2% increase added approximately $1.5 billion to the assessment roll. The single-family residential portion of our Prop 8s remained virtually unchanged from last year. However, I will say that about 52% of all residential properties, that would be condos, mobile homes, and single-family residents, are in what we call the Prop 8 status, so they're basically valued at less than what they, their Prop 13 value. Based on artificial reasons or not, foreclosure, we keep hearing some feedback. Based on artificial reasons or not, foreclosure activity continues to decline. For example, first quarter notice of faults are down 18% from last year, and trustees' deeds are down 34% over the same period last year. We are starting to see some slight increases in values in our commercial area, namely apartments, mega warehouses, and some hotels. However, commercial values in general continue to be a concern. As an example, we have over 17,000 assessment appeals yet to be heard. Almost 7,600 of those are commercial, and as you all know, there's substantial value at risk of the assessment role with those numbers. Beginning July 15, Riverside County property owners will be able to review their value notices online. This was something that the board passed last year, you passed last year, saved us about $300,000, so they can go online, put in their assessment number or address, and they will be able to see their value for this year. If for some reason they can't get it that way, they can contact our office and we'll send them a copy. Property owners who disagree with their assessed value may file a free decline in value application. The due date for that is September 4. They can go online to our website, www.riversideacr.com, and get the online application. Again, the applications are due by September 4. And then property owners disputing their value may also file an assessment appeal with clerk of the board. The filing dates for that is July 2 through November 30. And I would suggest that if they have, need any additional information, that they go to the clerk of the board's website, which is www.rivcove.com. Finally, I'd like to recognize and thank the hardworking staff of the assessor of County Court Recorder, who once again, under very challenging circumstances, were able to finalize the assessment roll in a timely and professional manner. Be happy to try and answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. I do not see any questions by members of the board. I'd just add that first and foremost, you and your staff are doing a tremendous job. I appreciate just keeping us up to board or up to speed on the values. I am sure that the burden of the assessment applications are tremendous. My concern is, and it's with more and more people having to move from their homes, you see the apartment values going up because many more are now going into apartments. Warehouse distribution is obviously going to continue because we are the hub of distribution throughout the country. But the commercial decline is going to take years to come back because of the, I mean, that always follows the growth, as you know, of the residential market. The residential market is going to take a few more years to get back, so that's my concern. And there are huge values, as you know and know. So, we need to continue, I think, count on another three or four, maybe five more years to get back to even normal. That's unfortunate.
If I could make just a couple of quick comments. One is, I think that the governor is planning on signing the Homeowners Bill of Rights, which has additional foreclosure-related issues. We've continued to see a substantial decline in foreclosures. You know, how that's going to shake out, I don't know, but it is, you know, it's a good thing that where we're at for this year, but don't know what's on the, as I mentioned, it's a fragile recovery. Hard to tell what's going to be out there next year.
Okay, thank you. We do have Supervisor Benoit with comments, possibly questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Obviously, good news, incrementally moving in a good direction, still not in the positive, but you had originally estimated, and of course, it's critical to our budget discussions as we've had, I believe it was 2.5 or so percent decline. It's now going to be less than 1. Can you give a ballpark figure in terms of what that means in terms of revenue difference?
I think it's about $10 million.
We had been planning on a loss of $10 million. It's now less than a million.
Okay. It doesn't solve our problems, but it's moving in the right direction.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. All right, we'll now go to our policy calendar.
Mr. Chairman, with apologies, I intended to pull 2.26, and it slipped ahead of me for just a quick comment. I don't need to re-vote it if I can make a comment.
Sure.
I'd just like to commend again, a couple of our youth folks are here. We have a report in our minors on the youth advisory committees throughout the county. Everybody's done some terrific work. I've got to believe that our fourth district is at the top of the heap, but there might be some who disagree with that. But I would just like to highlight some of, a couple of our great programs. We did a golf parade every year in the desert, but this year I was able to ride in the golf parrot with our youth advisory guys. It was an exciting day and helped educate our community about what our youth advisory councils do. Just picking a couple out of this long list of our projects that are noteworthy. On Halloween night, our kids were out trick-or-treating but asking for donations of canned goods for the, and they were given to the Office on Aging, in particular to the Grandparents' Raising Grandchildren program. And finally, I'd just note that a very active role of our youth advisor committee in organizing and putting on the Battle of the Bands at the Riverside County Fair and National Date Festival. I just believe that all of our youth that are involved in these programs deserve to be recognized, and I thank those that are here today and everybody else for participating.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Benoit. Yes, our youth council and youth commission, we appreciate all that they're doing. I'll pull it to the new group coming back next year. All right, any items to be pulled from our policy calendar, members?
Mr. Chair, can we take a vote on item 2.21, please? Can we take a vote on item 2.21?
So moved. Oh, yes, we can. I'm sorry.
Second. And included in that is all the changes, Mr. Chair, all the changes that she recommended. And I've had those as well, additions to the answers and corrections.
Please, sir. Supervisor, motion carries for zero. Now, taking this to our policy calendar and any items to be pulled by members. Supervisor Benoit.
3.1.
3.1, we have a speaker on that as well. Any others? Supervisor Stone.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I need to pull, excuse me, abstain on item 3.22.
22?
Doing I do business with Desert Health District, and also if we could pull 3.48.
Jeff, it was 3.22 abstain.
Yes, sir. That's all.
All right. All right, apparently no others to be pulled, so I'll call for a motion. We do have a number of items. Speakers on items 3-1, 3-6, 3-8, 3-1-8, 3-2-2, excuse me, 3-2-2 is an extension, so that does not need to be pulled. Item 3.44, and items 3-4-9, excuse me, 3-4-8 and 3-4-9.
I'll let it bounce.
Second for motion. Have a second, please. Motion passes for zero. Item 3.1, Supervisor Benoit, then we do have a speaker.
Thank you. I'd just like to commend the folks involved, took the Tom Freeman for the initiation of the Riverside County Ag Trail, and pleased to join Supervisor Stone in bringing forward this new concept in how to market effectively our agricultural interests in Riverside County, one of our largest, I think the largest, single source of jobs and income to Riverside County residents. Agriculture sometimes kind of gets taken for granted, but this program will help us to particularly market those agricultural interests that have an open door in some form of, currently in the wine country, and we have a lot of date folks. Help us advertise those availabilities and also market nationally and internationally our terrific agricultural products in Riverside County. With that, I'd move approval, but Mr. Stone?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm delighted to co-sponsor this with Supervisor Benoit. The Planning Commission on July 25 is going to be getting our wine country planned that is going to take our wine country from the 7,000 acres it's presently planted in vines to over 22,000 acres. I think you'll all agree that we've had a very strong agricultural history in Riverside County, which I'm very happy to see is continuing initially with the citrus. We still have quite a citrus crop in the county, the dates in the eastern, and now the new emerging wine rate-growing industry. This represents a $3 billion stimulus to our county jobs and products. We ship our agricultural products to over 67 countries throughout the world. So, this is an area that we want to emphasize, and this new concept of having an ag trail is very successful in other areas, and Mr. Freeman was very kind to help us put this together as an agenda item for us to consider today. So, in the best interest of economic development, which I think we all will embrace, this is going to, again, promote Riverside County as a strong agricultural region that is going to continue to pay our residents and the county dividends for many decades to come, and I enthusiastically will move it on our behalf. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, but we do have a speaker, Mr. Grant, item 3.1.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and our esteemed panel of us. Yes, I applaud this program, but I see intrigue, collusion, and several other issues in this. I tell you, from the standpoint of agriculture, it should be called farm built, and unfortunately, it should have been done years ago because this was the prime industry of this country or this county ever since I've come here. And the introduction of this is just an introduction to commercial advantages, as far as I'm concerned. Tourists traveling in these areas are purely directed into two items, and they're stated here, the date festival and the wine country. The wine country is going to be inundated with tourism and inundated with people living there over the weekend or the trips that they go to that area. And after all's said and done, you know what wine is? It's alcohol, and it creates problems. Dates, I don't know about dates. They used to come from the Middle East, but now they're coming from the noise area. So, as far as I'm concerned, this is going to be a very different situation for the people, the public, we, the citizens of this county. By virtue of, there's no explanation of who's going to pay our EDA for this process, the planning of it, and who's going to cover this directional, and I've only got three minutes. I wish I had more. But the point is that this study is just a suggestion for commercial identity, and it's going to cause us some major trouble in transportation. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Gary. We do have another speaker on this, Marquette. Marquette?
Chareco.
Oh, hi, yes, how are you? Good to see you.
Hi, Margaret Chareco-Greche, Southern District Director for the California Women for Agriculture, representing the Los Angeles chapter, Inland Empire, Pala Verde, and Coachella Valley. We believe, the CWA, that the Ag Trail will be an excellent tool to promote the ag industry, which is the number one industry in the state of California. We do need to increase the awareness of the ag industry to tourists and residents alike. Our Coachella Valley CWA spearheaded an effort to have a billboard as you enter into California from Arizona that reads, "Welcome to California by California grown." And we are going to try and implement this program throughout California as well. We, CWA, believe in educating the public about agriculture. This would indeed be another way of informing and educating the public. We promote and help finance gardens in the local school districts. We encourage and promote visits to the schools on behalf of ag, and we have bus tours throughout the year to the farm areas and the packing houses. And we give out over 20-plus scholarships to students who are pursuing a career in ag or related to ag. Signage of crops will be great. I'm still wondering what that crop is, by Dylan and I Tan. As our population increases, the responsibility of California as the number one provider of food for the world only makes this even more urgent that the public is aware of the ag industry. We need to keep our ag lands safe from development and ensure that we look to the future of ag and the needs of ag, not only the lands, but the water and the labor to harvest. And we need to continue to tell people that if they eat food and wear clothes, they are indeed involved in agriculture. We also need to remind people that farmers grow the best medicine. And yes, CWA is excited about the Ag Trail and hopes to make it a reality in the next year. This should be a very exciting project and looking forward to seeing it develop. I think it's a great idea, John.
Supervisor Stone, followed by Supervisor Benoit.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate Mr. Grant's comments on saying that this should be coming forward and then saying that it's going to be detrimental to the citizens that live in the county. And I think that I'll respond by saying that I think the most important issue in our county right now is getting our people back to work. And I can speak with some experience. This past weekend, one of my, one of my children, my first of my children got married this weekend, not in the wine country, but close to the wine country, and we had relatives that flew in from not only the United States, but all over the world. And there was no hotels for anyone to get unless they had an early reservation because there were so many weddings in the wine country that they bought all hotels between Temecula, Marietta, Hammett, they were all sold out. So, if Mr. Grant wants to know where the revenue is going to come from, it's going to come from the bed tax from all the hotels that the county is the beneficiary of, and incorporated areas, going to come from the sales tax of products that are sold, not only wine, but when people come here for weddings, and by the way, when they go to do a wedding in the wine country, these weddings range anywhere from $25,000 to $200,000. And you talk about a local stimulus for the area, flower shops are the beneficiaries, the tux rental companies are the beneficiaries, the malls, the rent of cars, the gas stations. There is a tremendous economic benefit to, again, promoting this jewel of wine country that what the new plan that it built out will have 105 wineries will be probably one of the strongest economic stimulus that Southwest Riverside County has seen in decades that I believe is going to help propel us from this trough that our assessor has described with property values, and property values will begin to escalate because people are going to want a part of this wine country. They're going to want to buy, they want to be a part of this beautiful ambiance and magnificence that is being built, including a new sewer line is going down there. a new sewer line is going down there. So, this is just Southwest component to ag, and then there's Supervisor Benoit's district that has tremendous agriculture. All you have to do is just look at the city of Blythe, which is our furthermost eastern border. My heavens, they, they grow broccoli, they grow everything that supplies not only the United States, but the world with food, and they've got plenty of water, according to the mayor that I had a chance to visit with in the past couple of weeks. So, I applaud Supervisor Benoit for helping getting this on the agenda. This is going to be a strong economic benefit for, for our residents, and I think a lot of our residents would like to see us keep our agricultural background and history, not to mention still a lot of citrus in Supervisor Buster's district. Supervisor Buster himself is a citrus farmer, and there's still a lot of citrus, not only in the first district, but the third district as well, and I'm hoping that we're going to be able to keep a lot of that into ag and not see it get developed in the future.
Supervisor Benoit.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to thank Marquette Shereko Riche, I'm sorry, I always forget the last part of the name there, because I'm so familiar with Shereko's son and their mom and dad and the service they provide along the interstate freeway going to Blythe, and the pet museum and everything. But thank you for coming in all the way from out there today to add to this discussion. And I've been the guest of the California Women in Agriculture at a number of events in the Coachella Valley. This is a very, very large part of our economy, and it's not just dates, I don't want to, my, my good friends and growers of grapes and all varieties of vegetables and other products in our Coachella Valley, and certainly, we want to do everything we can to help them and to market those products, both in the state and export. It's a huge part of our exports out of this county that's related. And to the extent that we can also assist the tourism, I will tell you that the people who service the second or the other major industry in my valley, i.e. tourism, are very, very anxiously watching this and pleased to see it, and we do everything we can to make sure that they have jobs and an opportunity to, to earn a living in our county. And I think that anything we can do to allow for those kinds of opportunities is a terrific step forward, is a very reasonable, low-cost way to help. So, thank you, Margaret, for coming in, and thank you for, Mr. Freeman, again, for putting this on, and we'll see great things as a result. Move approval. Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion is unanimous, for zero. Taking this, Stone, on 3.6, Robert Mayby. Mr. Mayby? Mr. Mayby, you're up for item 3.6.
Before I start, could I get a little help, I'm putting a couple, some papers on the screen, please. Would you give me help, Minister Stone? Would you help me put these?
Normal.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Perhaps another time. I believe that Agenda 3.6 is a mockery for crime victims. District Attorney Zellerback is only interested in being re-elected. He has no interest in crime victims. I have here a complaint filed with the District Attorney April 10th, 2012, document of fraud against Supervisor Bob Buster, Supervisor Stone. I received no response, but I did receive an invitation to Zellerback's birthday party May 30th, 2012, hosted by Stone and Buster at 5,000 a table. Conflict of interest, I think most people would say so. Is it possible in this county to make a complaint against a supervisor for fraud that was documented, once they have a conflict of interest in raising money before and after the election? I would think if he ought to spend a little bit of his time on the crime victims, which includes myself, and not be out trying to raise money two years for the reelection two years from now. I'd like to hear from Mr. Buster, what do you think, Mr. Buster, is fraud pretty commonplace with you? Any response, Mr. Stone?
Mr.?
I mean, you always have something to say. Usually, you go on for 15, 20 minutes on what's the weather.
I respond, I respond to intelligent conversation, Mr. Maybe, related to the agenda item, and you don't have any intelligent conversation related to the agenda.
I don't, I'm sure we don't, Mr. Stone.
Mr. Maybe.
Could you, any of your supervisors give me a little bit of help in seeing if the District Attorney will take this complaint for a crime victim?
We're not going to carry any debates with you. If you'd like to contact the District Attorney directly.
There won't be any debate, because you have nothing to say. Thank you, Mr. Kevlin.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Move approval. Second. Please vote, item 3.6. Motion is unanimous, item 3.8, Gary Graham. Mr. Graham, 3.8. And you can stay right up here for 3.18.
3.9? Okay.
No, 3.8.
Yeah, that's interesting. 3.8 is originally a redevelopment program to upgrade Roma Land, which is now part of Menifee. Well, I understand and remember exactly, there was approximately $100 million of landscaping and improvements for that, from IDA money. Now, we come to the maintenance of it, landscaping, maintenance of landscaping. Do you know how much that costs? No, you don't. You're not aware of it. But the point is, it's into perpetuity. It depends on the items of agriculture or growth that you put in that area that you're going to thrive. Many of the trees that were put there were lost. It cost a lot of money, and it's IDA money, and yet IDA money was not supposed to be expended in the amount for maintenance. And here it is, transferred over now, no statement of cost in your information, I don't see it, but we, the public, are dumb, aren't we? You can tell us anything, because there's not enough of us that can come here and explain to you that we don't want this kind of process, because this is our government, and we have the say on it, we're supposed to. That's the Declaration of Independence that says that, that you are the representatives of the people. I am one of the people, and I'm telling you right now, you're transferring the cost over to us for the benefit of developers in that particular area. If you look at that particular area, if you look at the people that have invested properties in that area, you will find that you're aiding developers and not we, the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Move approval of item 3.8.
Second.
Please vote. Motion is unanimous, item 3.18, Gary. You're up again.
I got to review my subject, because I don't have all day, and I don't get paid for this. So, 3.8.
3.18.
3.18.
3.18?
You put in request for 3.18.
I don't know that I got the material for, what is 3.18? Could you enlighten me?
It's the parking, the vouchers for parking when people are coming to test a plan addressed the board.
It's the vouchers for parking when people come and address the board?
Yeah, and my suggestion to that is, I see you haven't got it on the, the agenda, the statements were that it was coming back for statements. My suggestion, it's just a positive statement, but if you, if you felt that it was that the people coming to this board could sign in, then you would have an identification that they're verified that they did come to this meeting. To deny them the right to come to this meeting and not have to pay for parking that you're gaining the benefit from is an issue of undemocratic philosophy. And as far as I'm concerned, the answer to this has got to be that you identify the people that come to this meeting. So, the commitment would be a sign in sheet. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Gary. Almost, excuse me, motion, Supervisor Stone, I'll second your motion, please vote. Motion is unanimous. Taking this, our 3.44. We have four speakers, Mario Pavone, Mario is going to be followed by David Barrigan, will be followed by Martin Sanderson and Carol Bear. Good morning, Mario.
Good morning. My name is Mario Pavone, president of the Empower America Coalition. I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for the opportunity to speak in favor of the Valor Act. Special thanks to Supervisor Tabaglione, Commissioner Freeman, for the drafting of this very important and timely act. My hope is that it will bring about a call to action and inspire other counties to respond. We all know the numbers, 30% of young veterans are unemployed, over a third of the homeless are veterans, and still another million veterans will be entering the workforce in the next five years. Empower America, like many other organizations, can recruit and train veterans to work in renewable energy, but at the end of the day, there has to be a job. We have a tremendous opportunity to consciously and proactively repay our veterans by providing special preferences in programs, policy, and funding. As counties work to meet their renewable energy mandates, we must work together to make sure that our local veteran workforce is not forgotten. As an organization, we believe in American veteran jobs, American-made products, and American energy independence. With your support, we believe the Valor Act is the right way forward. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mario. Appreciate your leadership in this. David?
Staffs, this is Sergeant Major David Barrigan, U.S. Marine Corps. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board members. David Barrigan, retired Marine Corps Sergeant Major, retired in 2007. You know, when, when my, my uncles got back from, from their war, and we'll call it the Vietnam War, they didn't have the hoopla that I got, you know? In contrast, I came home and I was the Veteran's Day Parade Grand Marshal, so it was great for me. I started a business in 2007, Occupational Safety and Health, and then Assemblyman Benoit was kind enough to help me in Sacramento to get that business going. The Valor Act is just that, it's to help veterans coming home, you know? The mission, if you look at a mission, every Marine needs a mission. So, the mission is to get veterans home, get them cross-trained into the renewable energy arena, and get them moving forward in life into something new. And I was an infantry guy, so my, my mission was to seek out those with and destroy the enemy. So, when I came home, I just did it in business, and that's what I'm hoping to accomplish with our veterans as they come home.
Thank you. Sergeant Major.
Thank you.
David, appreciate it, appreciate it. Appreciate your service to our country.
Thank you, sir.
Martin Sanderson. Martin is going to be followed by Carol Bear.
Board of Supervisors, Chairman, Executive Officer, and County Council. I'm Martin Sanderson from Cavazon, and I'm here today to show support for Supervisor Tabaglione's motion to help veterans find work. Mr. Freeman of EDA said Cavazon has a 34% unemployment rate. I am a veteran and know veterans in Cavazon who need work. All of us in Cavazon must compete with an organization that has no labor costs, pays no tax, and is shielded by the corporate veil. We ask supervisors to help veterans in Cavazon by improving improper land use at 15118 Elm Street, which was declared illegal by U. November of 2011. On November 15th, the Board approved an order to abate for improper land use at that address. The property is owned by Nikki Williams of Desert Hot Springs, and she has exceeded the March 6th deadline. Board policy F-5 allows for code enforcement response. Veterans I know in Cavazon don't mind competition, as long as it's fair. Please help us. We request the Board stop unfair competition from that address by ordering an abatement of improper land use. Board and Supervisor Ashley, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.